I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for December 2nd, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, we are going to do some recognitions. I'm going to hand it over to Commissioner Mary Roberts to do the community academy graduates.
Thank you. Would the graduates from this year's class please come forward? This is just a handful of them. We had eighteen graduate this year, but only, I guess, this five, no, six. Six are able to join us tonight. It wasn't on the original list, but I thought it would be a good thing to show you the graduates in person that, you know, come from all walks of life and from all areas of our community. And to congratulate them for taking the ten-week course and learning more about how the city runs. And give you the opportunity to do a shameless plug for why people should join the academy for next year. How's that?
My name is Brandy Johns. I'm just a city resident and I'm many hats. It's just, we'll just do that one right now. And the coolest thing is just having some of these individuals that protect us, take care of our water, do all of these behind-the-scenes things. They are so dedicated and so loving to the city that that just blew my mind, that they just, they want to give it their all for everything that we have. So that's all I got.
I'm Wookiee Ramos. I've actually done it twice now. Both times were very enlightening. I definitely learned a lot about how the city works and how passionate the department heads are. I definitely recommend it. It gives a great understanding of just a large scope of the things that go on in the city.
Good evening. I am Liz Fuss. I am a lifelong resident of Adrian and also work in the community. And I echo what they have said, the dedication of the department heads, the commissioners, the mayor. It's just, I think it's a thankless job for all of them and just knowing what all they go through, how they have to make their decisions and the constraints that they have to make those in. It's just eye-opening and I do, I also encourage anybody to take part in it if they can.
Guy Smith, city resident. Pretty much everything that they've said, and we're almost out of words here that we can actually talk about. But one of the key things is that passion that they have and you actually see it in their eyes when they speak to you and when they're answering your questions and the fact that they know all that information. And one of the better things that you get out of it is really to understand how a city operates and what those, you know, money figures are. So you actually kind of know where your money's going. You actually see that, kind of learn from that, understand that it's not just, you know, frivolously spent wherever. It's, you know, it's got a real breakdown to it and how it, how it has to go and how it operates.
James Troll, I'm a city resident. Pretty much everything they've said. You guys covered everything. What am I supposed to say?
Scotty Marvin, a city resident for fifty years. I'm old, so, but you know, the city and what they do behind the scenes, especially our police and fire, I'm all for them totally. So, and, and everything that the city and behind the scenes, but it's done, I really appreciate everybody and Mary taking, having us take this class. So I encourage you to take it. It's dedication, but you can do it.
Okay, and we have some graduates from last year in the audience, so thank you for participating. But really, I wanted them to come and show you, these are the type of residents that have done the academy. So if you think you're too young, too old, you're whatever, it's anyone and everyone can do it. So we really, really encourage you to participate next year. So, thank you and congratulations.
We have another recognition tonight, so if Chief Massengill will come forward, we have a fire badge pinning ceremony.
Good evening. Tonight, we have actually five badges to present for five firefighters that have passed their probationary status. So their probation lasts one year, usually, that's the minimum, and all of them successfully completed in their one year. So in addition to their first year, they spent the last about sixteen months in a paramedic program. Five of them, as they've worked full-time and went through paramedic program. I think if you ask any one of them, they'll be happy to say they're almost finished. They have just, I believe, this month, and then their internships after the first year, where they actually go out and, and ride in an ambulance and, and perform as if they were by themselves. So I'm sure they're very happy and we're very happy that they're, they are approaching the end of their, of their class. So there are five tonight, and if you remember, oh, about a year and a half ago, at the beginning of the last budget year, you approved for us to add three additional firefighters. So three of these positions are the additional. That's why there's five as opposed to the normal one or two. So happy to have all five of them here tonight. First one, if you want to come up, Sandy, stand next to me. Sandy Gooding, she came to us, many years of experience as a firefighter and EMT with Cambridge Township Fire Department. Is a paid-on-call firefighter and also a lot of years working at Bixby and Hickman Hospitals as a tech in the ER. So she has a lot of experience there, taking care of patients and that sort of thing. So tonight, her, her kids Wyatt and Sierra are here to pin her badge on. So if you guys want to come up right in front there, have the spotlight. Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Jack Kepler. Jack, Jack came to us from Clinton. He was a firefighter, EMT on their paid-on-call fire department. Also, he's a licensed builder, which has come in handy around the station. He and his shift replaced the cabinets in our kitchen and, and saved the city some money there because they're able to do some projects around the station that normally we'd pay somebody else to do. So glad to have him on board. His wife, Jody, and daughter Sawyer are here tonight to pin his badge on. Next, we have Jason Loper. He came to us actually from Hillsdale County. He was a firefighter and EMT on a fire department over there. And he actually came to us working in a factory. There you are. He worked in a factory and during his interview, he said he was, wanted to use his skills and, and have maybe a little more fulfilling career. So glad to have him here and, and on board with us. And his son Casey is here tonight to present his badge. Brett? Brett Borton is our next. He actually came to us from Madison Township. He was a paid-on-call firefighter there. He had a lot of experience running fire EMS calls there and also tagging along with his dad to the fire station. As long as I've known him, I knew his dad was in the fire service and I worked with his dad. So his dad, Dave, is here with us tonight to pin his badge on. Haley? Haley Smith is an Adrian High School graduate, actually raised here in Adrian. She came to us, she had firefighting experience and EMT experience in Adrian Township on their paid-on-call department. So she came to us with some experience there. And with us tonight is Lena, her sister, to pin her badge. Where's, there she is, outside. Pleasure. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And congratulations, everyone. We will now begin public comment for items that are on the agenda. Just to reiterate, this is public comment. It is not a dialogue time, so there will be no response from the dais. This is a time for the public to comment. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence and you will see the three-minute time limit up on the screen. We will begin inside the city chambers first and then we will open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment regarding items on the agenda inside the chambers, we will open it up to the Zoom participants at this time. Hearing no public comment, we will now begin our work-study session and I will be handing it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I will in turn hand it back to Commissioner Roberts, who wants to share with us some information. She learned at the Michigan Department of Transportation's recent summit.
Thank you. So I was able to attend a meeting with MDOT and the local communities a couple of weeks ago. And MDOT and the communities gave an update on what the projects were this year and the upcoming projects. And I, I thought that some of them, some of the information I learned that they might be of interest to residents. So here goes. I just have a list of a few things and only one picture, so. Something I did not know until that day is that there is a twelve, ten-to-twelve hour power backup to the lights at twelve and fifty-two, twelve and fifty, and fifty-two and fifty. I know when we've had ice storms and other electrical outages, there have been some concerns about lights going out. But MDOT has put in place that they will run on batteries for at least ten hours, up to twelve hours. If the, if the electricity is out after that, then they will place generators at those main intersections. I know this came into play, really, I believe it came into play a couple of years ago when there was no power at fifty-two and fifty, or fifty-two and twelve, where there was a pretty bad accident there when it was very, very dark and there was, there was no power. And so people were going through that intersection. So just for your information, that that is something that MDOT does do and has done. We hear this all the time, but the two-twenty-three and Division intersection is constantly a source of accidents. And there was another one yesterday, I understand, that intersection is regulated through MDOT because two-twenty-three is their, their road, their baby. In 2026, there will be a left-turn lane with a signal onto Division. So that is something that they are going to do. They did a study, they're doing the engineering and survey work, and then so in 2026, there will be a left-turn lane, which hopefully will alleviate some of the concerns that, that residents have there. I don't think it's going to alleviate all of them, but it might alleviate some.
And to clarify, that left turn is on Division, not on two-twenty-three?
No, the, my understanding is the left turn is on two-twenty-three going onto Division.
I, I suggest that you clarify that because I was with the crew when they did the turn study. And it was opposite.
Okay.
That they explained to me that the two-twenty-three did not meet the threshold to have a turn light installed, but Division did.
I will clarify that. I, yeah, I actually wrote down and I asked them, left turn onto Division. So maybe he misunderstood me when he answered that, yes, that was correct. So I could ask again. The bridge at two-twenty-three is taking longer to complete for those that are affected by it. They did not anticipate it taking this long, but it will be done this spring, hopefully. They ran into massive amounts of damage that they just didn't know until they got into the undercarriage of the bridge. So hopefully April is anticipated date to be done, only a couple more months. So we'll see how that goes. One thing that I know that I've been asking our city engineer about removing is finally happening. At the corner of Front and Broad, we have that little triangle, little concrete triangle thingy in there. And as you can see, this is from, picture from MDOT, that they are going to take out that piece of concrete finally, and they're going to make a permanent right-turn lane from going south on Broad and turning right onto north, no, west front. That will be a right-turn lane there, which will be really nice. Also, you can see on there, I don't know if you can tell, but there's two red dots. There's going to be a stop sign now going north on Broad that is no longer, is not there currently. So, whoop, I lost my stuff. There we go. So there, there are some changes. There's also going to be some more, right now, we have the little yellow things that make us go around. That's going to be, going to be more permanent in nature and down to one lane there. Instead of it kind of, it goes two lanes the whole way. They're going to make it one lane the whole, I shouldn't say the whole way, but that, that whole block right there is going to be one lane instead. So it's being worked on and it's still not going to be a four-way stop or a roundabout like other people have suggested. But it is being worked on and hopefully will alleviate some of the issues that are, that are there. Church Street out over here will be paved at some point in the next year or two. They, they're redoing that, so that's going to affect city residents in the area. A couple of other things that aren't in the city that I thought residents might be interested in, Wolf Creek Bridge, what I call Wolf Creek Bridge, that will be a massive redo. So just be aware of that. And also, the Carson Highway Bridge is going to be completely replaced. So two main intersections or two main bridges that are right outside the city limits are going to be worked on quite a bit. Also, there's some work on M-52, both out to US-12 and to back through town through Beecher that they'll be doing in the next two or three years. Actually, they, they say twenty-five, twenty-six. They, just depends on budgets, my understanding. They did, they went over a lot of stuff about the budget and how things happen. And there, oftentimes, they get, they find additional funding. Things we hear a lot is, why do you do it, you know, right here? Why do you do it at this time? Why do you do it at this time? And the gentleman, the engineers from MDOT kept saying that sometimes at an inconvenient times, it's only because of funding. They either haven't used up all of their money from the previous year, they find more funding so that more roadwork can be done that wasn't anticipated. So they work it in whenever they can. So I guess for me, it was a reminder to, to be grateful that they have the funding, even if it is an inconvenient time for something to be done. The last thing they talked about was most of the funding for these roads comes from our gas tax. And as many of you may know, that electric vehicles are, are more prevalent. Our vehicles are more gas-efficient, so they're using less gas. You can go farther in my newer Buick than I can in my sixteen-year-old van on one tank of gas. And a lot of people are working from home. So the amount of gas being sold in the state has steadily, steadily, steadily decreased, which means we have less money to do the roads in our state. They are, the state is aware of this and they are looking at other options for funding how we do our roads. So those, those were some things that I thought residents might be interested in hearing about. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. It is Division Street where the lanes are being added, both the street and the private drive on the other side. But MDOT is doing the works, hence the confusion about that. A couple of you asked that I give an update on the point-of-sale inspection program, which is now in effect. So we sent out a press release that I think you all saw at the end of last week, which was a short week. And so we, as of today, are accepting applications to perform those inspections, of which we've had one so far. So not like we're going to have any trouble doing that in timely fashion. We're going to do that one tomorrow. But the application form is up on the website. All our forms are loaded into BSNA. So we're ready to go and certify properties as requests come in to perform those inspections. Again, as you all know, it's an exterior-only inspection, and so the time needed to perform those will be relatively short. And we expect and hope that it will move very smoothly for those who are involved. It, we're, we're trying to keep it as simple as possible, so we're not going to be using the the escrow provisions that are optional within the ordinance at this time, at least. Well, there's a referendum on the ordinance pending. You know, we will handle that in the normal enforcement process if, in fact, repairs don't get completed as expected. But we're kind of hoping that everything gets done without the need for that as, as we roll this out. I reached out to the Association of Realtors president at the end of last week as well, shared with, with her the press release and invited her to have a discussion this week if she would like. She has, she replied, she did not give me any dates or times that she'd like to have that discussion, but hopefully we can chat this week at some point, just to clarify anything that, that might be lingering in their minds and also to receive any suggestions as to how we can make it go more smoothly for people. But, you know, the one application that we did get, they pulled it off the website and emailed it in and that all worked fine. So we're hopeful that it will be relatively painless process. And of course, as you know, there's no fee at this time either. It is still possible if a private inspector wants to register for them to do that, and we have that set up as well. But I'm not so sure so many people are going to want to hire somebody privately to do it when we're doing it for free. So we'll see how that goes. But happy to answer any questions you have, although, as I say, we've had limited exposure to it so far, receiving only one request.
Will there be any updates? So I think of this kind of similar to a discipline process in the school. So we could say we had thirty suspensions last month, but that doesn't really tell us here, sitting at the table, much information. So are these reports going to be broken down by, there were twelve violations for Ruths. There were six violations for trash, brush, those sort of things. Or there was no, no demerits and the sale was able to proceed?
It'll be, we'll be able to break down pretty easily the certificates versus the conditional certificates. You know, it would require some sorting and things. I'm assuming we're going to get a large number here eventually because there's a large number of properties listed. And I, the one thing I should add is that after a couple of days here, as if applications don't trickle in more quickly than they are right now, then we're going to go ahead and send out applications to those property owners that we now have properties listed, so they have them in their hands. But like I say, we'll be able to provide you with, pretty easily with a report on certificates issued, which means they were cleaned, there was no issues, and they were certified versus conditional certificates, which means there were conditions that had to be met and that the buyer had to sign on to in order to have those properties certified. And we should be able to give you some feedback as well on, you know, things that were corrected in the interim, you know, before the sale as well. That'll all be documented in BSNA, and so we'll be able to report to you on that.
One of the concerns I had was when I went to the, to the website, it lists chapter three of the inspection standards. And we have ten pages of legal jargon with new additions. So there's blue font and then there's strike-through font. And, you know, I, I think with someone with a law degree or a background in reading, that is one thing. But we're talking about John Q. Public trying to get through ten pages of, what do I want, what do I need to do to fix my house up? If they're trying to be proactive before they sell it, that's a pretty lofty document to shift through. Back in May, I emailed you the document that Lincoln Park uses and it's reduced down to one page. And I think it's the sixteen bullet points, yeah, sixteen bullet points from chapter three that is nice and easy to follow along, that says roof, chimneys, gutters, and then a description behind that. I think in terms of that customer service aspect for our citizens, trying to break down that legalese with strike-throughs and and blue font, if blue font's in effect, or it needs to wait to be approved, that would go a far way to helping people understand what they actually have to do to prepare their house for inspection.
So a couple things. Unfortunately, we don't have a version of the 2024 Property Maintenance Code yet that doesn't have the change tracking from the 2021 version. So as soon as we're able to get that from the publisher, the change tracking will be off there. But that was the only version we had available at this time. I'm a little, I thought about, in fact, actually Jay created something in AI for me out of Chapter 3. But I'm really reticent to try to put the law in other terms other than the terms that are enacted in the ordinance, because that's the law, right? And so anything you do to put a gloss on it doesn't catch the full meaning of the words that are codified in the ordinance or the code. We will probably try to develop some checklists for people. But I think what we put out in the press release was about the simplest thing you could say, and is pretty easy to understand. If the exterior of your property is well-maintained and nothing's broken, you're not going to have a problem with the inspection. But if things are broken, there's things in poor condition, probably those are going to be caught. Anything else? What is there? Right. Does anyone have any other items for work session?
Just not necessarily right now, but if I've noticed that we've had quite a bit of budget items come through with the enhancement grants, if we could kind of get that current status of what that budget is at some time, that'd be great.
Yep, we got that. Do that. Right, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
So our city clerk found a mistake. The resolution is not R24-047, it's R24-048. So I will be asking for a motion to approve the agenda with the resolution number change. May I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I motion to adopt the agenda with the change of the resolution number. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
May I get a motion to approve the consent, sorry, to adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to our regular agenda, Resolution R24-048 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve Phase 3, Phases 3 through 6 of a proposed contract with the Smith Group for continued design and construction management of the Town Square project. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to public comment, we will begin inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment within the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to clarify once again, that commissioners may not, will not respond to the public comment. It is a time for public comment. It is not a time for dialogue. If you have questions or concerns and want to speak with one of the commissioners or the city administrator or myself, you may do that after the meeting. If you are looking for questions to be answered or to have that dialogue, but you can give your comments at this time. And just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin now. Hearing no public comment within the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, we will now begin commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I'd like to take a moment to thank our code enforcement officer, Glenn Preston. In the packet, he gave us a detailed explanation of why we were accepting a higher bid than the lowest bid for the asbestos removal. And that was very, very helpful and adequate so that we didn't have to ask any questions. So thank you, Glenn.
Just a reminder that this Friday is the parade and the lighting at Comstock Park. So we hope that most of you will brave the cold. It is supposed to be very chilly Friday night, but we hope that you will come on out. And it's always a great time and a very exciting and fun time to kick off the holiday season here in Adrian. So we hope that everyone will come out and enjoy the festivities. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.